I'm ready.
I'd like to open the Selectmen's Meeting, September 9, 2019, about 5:03. Is anyone recording aside from like now? And first on the agenda is the discuss the Board of Selectmen reorganization. Mitzi Hollenbeck's last day was yesterday, so we highlighted most of her items that could need some attention until the next election, which is going to be when?
November 5.
November 5. It will be the new selectmen's man or woman election. So in the meantime, there's just a few to address. One is the chairman. I happen to be acting as the vice chairman or was the vice chairman prior to Mitzi's leaving. I'd like to be appointed as the chairman. It traditionally is the last term of the, we'll call it the senior person, whoever is coming up for election. Mitzi would be the chairman until the end of April. I'd be somewhat reluctant to have the new person be the chairman. That can change when the new chairman, when the new selectmen come on board. You can choose to reorganize then. Some of the things that you or I might end up with, you can reshuffle after the election.
Yep, no, that's fine, but I nominate John Power to lead as the chairman.
I guess I'll second that. Any discussion here and none? All those in favor?
Aye.
There's actually the next three, I can do all three at the same time. Cable Television Advisory unless you don't want to be appointed. Cable Television Advisory Committee, Parking Clerk, and Regional Finance Committee. I would make a motion to nominate Leah or appoint Leah to fill that position.
I'll second that. I'm just, yep, so just little discussion here. There is a couple of other spots where Mitzi was.
Yeah, we don't have any activity.
On those, okay.
Right. There's no Economic Development Committee. There's no 43D review. Right.
Okay, so those committees are inactive.
Right.
All right, which I can get that from, okay, all right. So I was seconding.
Okay.
Okay.
And any further discussion here and none? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the last one, which is kind of a funky one, Staff Meeting Liaison. Mitzi had done that. I would do that, but I think she did it just to be in attendance. It's somewhat unusual that anyone's staff meeting is attended by a selectman. So if Mike O'Brien or Matt Perkins or anyone had a staff meeting, we would. The official, but we'll see if we go.
Yep, I nominate John for that department head slash staff meeting liaison person.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
So that's, put that away. The next one down is number five. You can just remind me when we get to 5:15.
Yep.
Number five, discuss rescheduling of Fall Town Meeting. We had tentatively set November 18th as the date. If we want to stick to a Monday date in November, the only date available will be November 25th, which is Thanksgiving week, which I would be suspicious, a lot of people would be on vacation. I'd like to reschedule it sometime in the springtime. I looked at the agenda and there seemed to be not a lot of items on there that needed any attention. So when I say the spring, without picking a date, I would just move it down the road and not schedule it.
Yeah, my only concern with that is I thought the planning board had something that they were working pretty diligently on to try to get a Fall Town Meeting.
Leah, I can speak to that.
Yeah.
I checked on it again today. So the thing that they were working on is the marijuana overlay district. They had a hearing, but they still haven't sent that letter of recommendation of approval to the board. So I even checked again today and they still haven't done it yet.
But just because they want, they can do the bylaw. The next whatever town meeting they want to bring it to.
Yeah.
I mean, a town meeting plus this, a fair amount of money.
I'm not totally comfortable saying, you know, let's completely move it from, you know. But if you want to table it maybe, so we're not, you know, I mean, I don't know if we should be forcing an issue, you know, for a.
Yeah, we'll just table it indefinitely.
Yep, I mean, again, I'm not opposed to a Tuesday either, you know? So if we wanted to find a tentative Tuesday, that would work with me too.
Like I said, if you look at the agenda, there wasn't much on.
Yeah.
So let's just, we'll just table it for the time being.
Yep.
If it gets interesting.
Maybe, you know, by the next meeting, if that's another two weeks, I think we would still be in good time-wise timing if we needed to add one, and then if not, we can make that formal whatever. But, all right.
Number six, review and vote to accept updated American Disability Act policy documents for the town of Lakeville. As part of the effort to update the town's ADA requirements, a grievance procedure needs to be adopted. Maureen has drafted the attached American with Disabilities Act grievance procedure for the board review. And I would, now there's two actually.
Yeah, and the public notices in there too.
So we have a 9-5 draft and we have a 9-9 draft.
So there are two parts of the same thing? It's the American with Disabilities Act grievance procedure and the American with Disabilities public notice that goes along with it.
Okay.
So these two documents need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen before we are able to move any further in our request to work and try to get towards any ADA grants to make some structural changes.
Is it two different votes?
It's two different votes, yeah.
Okay, so the draft on September 5th is the grievance procedure outlined. What I want, take the time to read unless we need to.
Yep, so I can make a motion to approve that.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the September 9th is the draft of the public notice. And this is to do what?
This is to go on the website and for people to know who to contact if they want to request some services under the ADA and compliance.
Okay.
So that will go through the website and then through me in my time as coordinator, and if someone else goes, it'll go to them.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the draft dated 9-9.
Okay, I second. I'm just finishing reading it because I just saw it a few minutes ago. I didn't read it before if I had it.
Maureen, I'll need a copy of that. I didn't get one in my packet. It's right here.
Yep, she has one.
Okay. All right, John, I'm good with that.
Move and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number seven, review and vote to sign a quitclaim deed entitled insurance affidavit to 296 Bedford Street. The town council has submitted a quitclaim deed entitled insurance affidavit in regards to the sale of the old police station for the selectmen to sign, which is attached. And I make a motion that we sign this.
I'll second it, but for conversation.
Sure, discussion.
Yeah, discussion. I, it's really my first sort of piece of town property here, so I don't really remember. I know we had done everything to sell the house and then we took the formal vote and, I mean, the property, the building, but I don't remember if someone can refresh my memory. We had put a performance bond in place.
I'll give you the information that I have, just in case you want to refresher.
Yep, yep.
We put it out to bid, and Tracy can speak to where it went out for.
Yep.
And Mark Knox was the only bidder on the property.
Yep.
They established the purchase price, and then Nate insisted that there be a performance bond for $60,000 on there to make sure that the property is indeed leveled and it's, they do what they say they're going to do with the property and not just leave it up because there is some contamination issues at the property.
Okay, and that had like, wasn't that timed?
For one year.
For one year in, with an extension.
If.
Not to be unreasonably withheld due to whatever.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And so the dollar amount was $30,000, of which I believe he's paid three of, and the remainder would be $27,000.
Yep.
And then the performance bond is $60,000, and he has to have certified checks to us for that. And then taxes are $318 and change. So those will be the checks that he delivers.
Taxes as in real estate taxes?
Yes.
So what is that actually taxing?
It's a payment in over taxes. I can read.
Is it a pilot?
Let me see, title insurance.
I mean, I know we're asking him to, you know, condemn the building and tear it down, but the land still has some value, so. Did we make that determination in our other paperwork?
Wouldn't mean the land determination.
Evaluation, what we wanted?
Yeah, no, for taxation purposes.
Oh, I.
Yes, I don't remember either.
That went through Harald.
I don't even know.
Okay.
So I will look up the statute that says.
Well, I mean, then he would go on the tax roll.
Right, right.
So then he'd be on the tax roll.
So then he would go on the tax roll, but right.
And I gotta assume that in Harald's department, he'd be valuing it as a non-conforming small lot, whatever his valuation is.
It gets valued at the sale price, is what it gets valued for, for a sale of that nature.
Can we just ask that that information be put in the file so it's just all complete?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah.
So we're just signing. Yes, any question?
According to the assessors sheet here, the building was valued at $700,000, okay? And they've reassessed it for $182,400, okay? And there's a note on here that said that the Board of Assessors agreed to remove the old police station with the assessment till the new structure is built, and the town requires the building be demolished by the new owner. So why wouldn't he pay taxes on the $183,000?
If I can find the statute, I can find it in my email. It's a statute from KP Law when they were figuring out the taxes.
I'm going to talk about the taxes at the time of the sale. I'm talking about the taxes after he takes ownership of the property.
Oh, I don't think we spoke to that at all.
Well, I guess I'd leave that to Harald, whether they demolished the building.
Yeah, this is the taxes.
That type of thing.
This is the taxes he owes at the time of the sale.
Right.
Okay, so this is for the taxes at the time of the sale.
Yes, well, it's not talking about valuations as they move forward.
All right, so can we definitely make sure that we address that?
Address what?
That the evaluation that taxes will be based on going forward after the sale.
Well, if we want to, we can have Harald come and put it on a further agenda.
Yep.
This is just the, this is just the deed.
Yep.
That's all that you do.
Well, what was in the purchase and sale agreement?
That was earlier meetings.
I'm just asking, was that in the purchase and sale agreement? It had anything to do with the taxes?
I have it here, actually, the purchase and sale agreement.
She has it.
Try to be prepared. Parties, purchase, titled deed, time for performance delivery, purchase price, conditions.
I can only assume that he would be paying taxes from the time he buys it.
Well, that's what I'm assuming, but it doesn't say that. It doesn't say that here.
What's here?
This is the assessors' card. The value was $700,000.
Well, I assume they're going to do a new one when he demolishes it.
This is it.
A new one.
As of July, as of June 19.
He hasn't bought it yet.
Then why was, why was the assessment changed then? He hasn't bought it yet.
I have no idea. We can, we can have Harald here.
No, but you're approving the deed now.
We're doing the deed.
Yeah, which is, once the deed's done, I mean, the sale is complete.
Right.
I'm just asking about the taxes.
Yeah, I mean.
The taxes, the town, the town gives him a building. I'm surprised there's any taxes.
Why is that?
Because he isn't, as of the time, the taxes, there are no taxes in theory due. He has taxes that would be due from the time he buys it, then the ticker starts then. Shouldn't be any taxes due because the town doesn't pay taxes on it, so.
We don't pay taxes to ourselves on it.
No, no, so I'm surprised that there's anything due.
I'm not saying anything to do. I want to know what he's going to be paying going forward.
I guess.
Well, whatever Harald comes up with, what I assume.
What I'd like to see is clarification too. I mean, I don't know that we hold this up, but.
But we've agreed to sell the bill.
Right.
And we have all our signatures on there.
Right, I just want to.
There's no back taxes to be paid, the future taxes.
Yep, that's where I'm concerned.
Well, then, but that's Harald coming up with a value of an undersized, nonconforming lot that will be vacant.
My, well, and that's.
My point is he has, he has not been back.
Right. So what's, what's the point then?
The question is, is he going to be paying taxes according to this purchase and sale agreement?
I don't know the purchase and sale agreement.
You always pay taxes once you take ownership.
John, I'm asking a question, John.
I would only assume that once someone buys property, you have to pay taxes on it.
There is nothing in the purchase and sales agreement that says he will not pay taxes going forward.
Right, right.
My question is more of a question, right now, this is what it takes to whatever, but going forward is, we're not taxing him for the building, but let's say he takes the building down and it's, the lot sits vacant for two years. He'll just be paying on the actual lot?
I would assume.
However, the assessor is, because, whatever.
Yeah, so it would be the lot.
So we haven't given him any?
Nope, nope. And then when he builds something on it, he'll be paying on the building.
Right, then of course it'll go into the tax roll and it'll be great, yes.
But no, this is just taxes due at the time of signing for the 318.
I'm surprised that there's any taxes.
I was going to say, do we know where that?
It has something to do, and it doesn't say it clearly in the email, it has something to do with the fact that it was a municipal building.
And that information came from?
Harald and from KP Law.
Going forward, can we add that kind of stuff to the packet? That like paper trail?
Sure.
You know, just so that we can read it.
Right, but it's there, and it's there anyways.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that that was my question over the weekend, how we got to that number, so.
This is just signing the deed.
Yep.
Once, I gotta assume he's going to pay taxes.
Yeah.
I hope he builds a multimillion dollar building and pays lots of taxes.
Yeah, I mean, you know, get it on the tax roll, that would be nice.
Right, so I did a.
Okay, so we did the motion I seconded, so we're.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye. 5:23, Mr. Chair.
Anyone here for the poll hearing? Let's go back to the poll here and get that out of the way.
Yep.
Poll hearing in PS Ave, 5:15 on Monday, it's now 5:23. And Selectmen will consider the petition, Town Municipal Lighting Plant in Verizon requests permission to install two new poles, and it outlines them. The discussion, the pole installation is to provide utilities to new houses being constructed on Equestrian Way, which is a new road. And the vote is to approve the placement of poles 17 and 1/2 in EL 18S on PS Ave and to approve the relocation of pole EL 18 on PS Ave. And there's a diagram to that effect, the last page.
Yep.
Outlines that. And so Equestrian Way is that old concrete plant that was there.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the moving of in the new locations, the new poles.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep, it says a butters list. Can I assume we do this like they've always been done, notified by mail? What's it called?
Certified mail.
Yeah, certified mail.
No, they just were notified by regular mail. They don't have to be certified.
Okay.
Mayoral sent.
Thank you.
And usually they show up, but these are all somewhat interested parties, if you will.
Okay.
Made a motion, seconded it, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discuss the zoning Board of Appeals recommended. I think I'll just hold off on that for a minute. Let's see what we've got for time. 5:26. January 9. We did the American Disability Vote to Authorize Town Administrator to Sign Serpit.
Actually, I have some questions on that one. I don't know if you want to do something else.
Well, if you have questions, we'll do something else. Vote to authorize Town Administrator to sign contract with Department of Energy Resources for Green Community Award, which will be announced in the next couple of weeks. There's a date here where we're not supposed to discuss the amounts and things like that, but in order for the Town Administrator to sign the contract, the Board needs to vote to authorize her to sign. It's a contract that's already going to be awarded, and it's just a signature on the page.
To accept money.
To accept money.
Okay.
And it's administered generally by Nate Darling and his crew, and they award us as part of the grant, which I won't talk about the grant, they award us $10,000 administrative support as part of that. That's on the first page attachment, Leah.
Yep.
So this is just simply signing it.
Okay, so I'll second that.
Okay, and any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote for the Town Administrator to sign extension of municipal contract with Serpit for master plan assistance. Serpit will not be able to finish the work on the master plan by December 31, 2019, so they have asked for an extension until March 30, 2020. No additional cost. This is just extending the contract time window for the master plan.
Okay, I second that.
Discussion?
Yeah, just on things like this, because I really haven't been able to get to Serpit. I don't really talk to a lot of those folks, and I know the communication is going through the office, but just for some clarification, if like, did we receive a letter? Did I miss a letter that said they weren't going to be able to finish? Or is that just something that happened at a meeting?
We spoke about it at the last master plan meeting, and it's something Jared had brought up over the phone, but they wanted to talk to the committee before they made a decision about.
Okay.
Moving it out. So he just couldn't get everything in that we wanted to get it done in a way that we'd be happy with.
Okay.
Rather not rush it and give it that extra time for no charge.
So, I mean, even just like a synopsis, just to help me, you know? I'm still new, I, you know, I hate saying that, but, you know, just to keep me on my toes too. Otherwise, I'm good with that.
Okay, so voted to extend it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we start the hearing, Nate Darling is here on Agenda Item Number Four. Nate, is that the only one you think you hear? Father, we can move you in and out. Nate Darling, you're present to discuss this at the meeting. Request of the Building Commissioner to approve a part-time maintenance position. Why don't you grab the microphone?
So we had funding already available for the 2020 budget cycle for an additional custodian to work with Ted and Blake Gorman. What we did here and what I'm asking for the Selectmen to do, we're trying to create consistency within our job descriptions. So whereas it was a part-time custodial position, this kind of lays out, or mirrors the union position, the full-time union position. So we use similar language and duplicated what was with that.
Yeah, and like I said, also, we made sure we made it applicable to all buildings instead of narrowing it down to the other buildings.
Two building, and then you gotta go to the next building.
Yeah, so we just changed the language a little. Nothing else has really changed in the position.
We received an email. Oh, one minute.
Okay, so would this be, again, pardon me, but is this, is clairinda seeing this too? Is this something that?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
And typically, when making changes like this, I'd do a red line copy, but where it was pretty much overhaul of the entire job description, excuse me, description, I just did the.
Okay.
So I vote that we accept the approved part-time maintenance position as outlined by Mr. Darling.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye, lucky.
That's it. Thank God you came.
Thank you.
So now we can get to why we're all here. So Agenda Item Number Three is the ascertainment hearing of Comcast contract renewal. So let me go through this. Have to read the attached legal ad to open the hearing. Legal notice, Town of Lakeville Cable Television Licensing Renewal Proceeding. Town of Lakeville Board of Selectmen is cable television licensing authority under Mass General Law 166A S1, and its designated cable advisory committee will hold a public ascertainment hearing on September 9, 2019, 5:30 at the Lakeville Senior Center located at 1 Deer Crossing, Lakeville, Mass, as part of the town Comcast cable television license renewal process. Comcast license is due to expire January 22, 2022, and the Federal Cable Act 47 U.S.C. 546 requires a public proceeding to ascertain the community's cable-related needs and interests as part of the license renewal process. Public comment is invited regarding Comcast license renewal needs and interests. If and when Comcast files a license renewal application, a copy shall be available for public inspection at the office of the town clerk during regular business hours and for reproduction at a reasonable fee. For more information on the public hearing, please call the Board of Selectmen's office at 508. at 508-946-8803. By order of the Board of Selectmen as license issuing authority, was put in the paper August 22nd, August 29th, the Middleborough Gazette Newspaper. Notice also was on www.masspublicnotices.org. Then, after that, I have an introduction.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Could you just make a motion to open the hearing?
I make a motion to open the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The introduction, which is rather lengthy. Go through that. Commonwealth of Mass Town of Lakeville Public Hearing on Comcast Cable Television Franchise Renewal, September 9, 2019. Good evening, welcome to the Town of Lakeville Public Hearing on Comcast Cable License Renewal. This hearing is part of the town's process to hear from the public and interested persons to ascertain the community's cable-related needs. I'm John Powley, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen is the cable license issuing authority under Mass General Laws Chapter 166A. With me tonight are other Selectmen, Leah Fabian and Bill August, the Cable Town's Counsel, who is here. And with us in the audience are members of the Lakeville Cable Advisory Committee, including its Chairman, Bob Marshall. Grateful to the committee for their diligent work to assist the town. Notice this hearing was in the local newspaper two successive weeks, and notices on the town website, copies of the legal advertisements are here, entered into the record as ascertainment. Hearing Exhibits One and Two. By way of the background for the public, Comcast cable television license expires on January 22, 2022. Federal and state law require the holding of public ascertainment proceedings, including this hearing. Ultimately, these proceedings will result in either a renewal of Comcast license or a denial of such renewal. We will receive comments and testimony about what cable-related needs and interests are important to the public and how Comcast has performed under its existing license. Members of the committee, Comcast, and other attendees may also have questions or comments. In this proceeding, we are open to accepting comments about all cable-related matters of interest to the public, including but not limited to customer service, license administration, the town's need regarding local studio, community programming and public, programming and public educational and government access, and maintaining support for the town's video origination capabilities. Any questions to Comcast should be directed through me and our rule and whether they are in order. Please keep your comments no longer than four minutes, I should change that to one minute, or four minutes. The process of ascertainment on community cable needs and interests will remain open until further notice. Before hearing from the public, let's first welcome and hear from Comcast representative, who I believe is Mike Gala.
Mike Gala.
Gala for introductory comments. So all those that speak, I'd like them to come up to the podium so they can show their handsome faces on TV.
Good evening, my name is Mike Gala, I am the Senior Government Affairs Manager for Comcast that covers Lakeville, and I'll be working with the Town of Lakeville and the representatives on the new license agreement going forward after the ascertainment hearing. Just a little bit of myself, I mean, I've been with Comcast for about five years now. Majority of our work that we do is with local towns in our coverage area. Mainly mine is the South Shore, down through Cape Cod, and then a little bit west over to Lakeville, Middleborough, Bedford, Fall River, and a couple of them sprinkled in between. So we work with all those towns on any cable-related matters, licenses agreements. We also work with the local schools, Council on Aging, housing authorities with our Internet Essentials Program, where we've connected over 2.4 million with our program, which is a low-income program, nine-nine-five-a-month, that we just expanded to a lot of other families that have and utilize federal assistance programs. So those are the two main areas of what I deal with, but obviously with Lakeville for tonight, I'm here to just listen to what the public has to say and what they're going to ascertain as their needs going forward into the new license and hopefully successful negotiations, and I look forward to working with those members that will be part of that committee doing that.
Okay, thank you. Next, I guess, up we can hear from the Cable Advisory.
Good evening, and thank you to the Board of Selectmen and Deborah Kenny, our Treasurer and Tax Collector, for helping our Cable Advisory Committee get the word out on our most recent cable survey as a result of a notice mailed with the June tax bill. This was very helpful, thank you. I'd also like to identify and thank all the members of our Cable Advisory Committee for taking on this task. We have Tom Serragnano and Walter Healy are here tonight, plus myself. We have other members, Ian Lewis and Fred Beal as well. We have Jose Invencio, who is the Executive Director of LakeCam. He's also been invaluable in our deliberations, and of course, Bill August, our Cable Attorney. Thank you all. As a result of our survey, we heard from approximately 10% of the households in town. I personally was pretty happy with that response. This information has been very useful, and the Cable Advisory Committee thanks all who were able to respond. Thank you, Lakeville. The license renewal process can be long and arduous, but with Comcast's help, we are hopeful that we can make it simpler and more direct. Fingers crossed. We continue to invite from all citizens to provide information of their experiences with and opinions about Comcast's performance during the last years they have served the town. We also ask for your opinions about what you see to be Lakeville's cable access needs going forward. The results, as I said, of our survey were not all that surprising, but very helpful. Cost, programming, and customer service were the three glaring issues identified by the survey. However, issues dealing with pricing, programming, internet, and telephone are not on the table. By law, we can only negotiate cable-TV related matters. As a matter of fact, Jose asked me to add this point. Apparently, some people misunderstand and think that Comcast and Verizon have some affiliation with or control over LakeCam. That is not the case. LakeCam is totally a separate entity. Over the last several years, I have kept a personal customer diary of my interactions with Comcast, and I will share this with them at the negotiating table. I strongly recommend that all customers do the same. It makes it easier to paint a clearer picture of every issue when trying to get a resolution. My diary is lengthy and specific, and cites many of the very same concerns identified in our survey. Over the next months, we'll be doing our best to help resolve problems you and we have identified, and we welcome Comcast's support in doing the same. The value of LakeCam cannot be understated. Given the dwindling meeting and event coverage that Lakeville has seen in our local newspapers in the last years, it has become increasingly difficult for the electorate to remain informed on the important issues of the day. LakeCam has grown into a very important asset for our citizens, sometimes being the only outlet to get information about what's happening in town, because it is not always possible for people to attend every meeting. And sadly, money becomes a central focus to support LakeCam and its ability to inform the people. Clearly, this will be part of our agenda as we negotiate. And tonight, we'd like to hear from any citizens, including the board, of course, who have thoughts that they'd like to share about what our cable needs are and Comcast's service over the last years. Thank you.
Anyone else from the Cable Advisory, first? Okay, anyone from the public? Anyone want to comment at all? Nope, kind of a quiet group.
John, if I may, the survey, I think, is very telling. There's a lot of information to be gathered from it. I was hopeful that we'd get some more folks here, but...
Right. Are you going to discuss this at your negotiation meetings?
Oh, yes.
You've done, okay, so you've done the survey, the survey is well done, so you use that as a negotiation point?
Right, I think that was the state's intention in setting up this whole ascertainment process, to ensure that the towns would look to the people and the subscribers to get that info, so that they weren't just going off willy-nilly.
Okay, true. I mean, it's well done, it's lengthy, but there's a, all the comments are outlined, it's 23 pages, so it's well done and worth that effort. Anything? Okay?
I just, yeah, I just wanted to say that, too, running through the actual survey, I agree that a lot of folks are just saying it's expensive, it's expensive, it's expensive. I mean, I'm sure where, you know, Comcast has heard that, you know. What does Comcast send out periodic, like, explanations of their, maybe you could answer that question, to its subscribers, saying, you know, if there's going to be a change? Why, if it's a regional thing, if it's, you know, because I always believe more communication is better than not enough. So I don't know if there's a way that Comcast goes about doing that. It also, I should also say, some of these people seem to have been surprised that all of a sudden their bill was going up, and that, that's just...
Anytime there is a change, we provide bill notices and other notices, notices to the town, those type of things, so I can't speak to why they seem surprised, but we definitely provide notices when there is some level of change.
When there's going to be a change. What about, like, package changes? Because even when I was a Comcast subscriber, I would go to the place in Middleborough, and they would say, oh, well, now you get those free, but you have to pay, you know. So I can see where some of the surprise comes with folks, because the packages themselves change, so...
We don't notify individual people of packet that would be...
When the packages may change that they're already getting.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
It'd be a town, a town-wide change.
Yeah, okay. But that could also be a surprise if someone says, gee, we don't get that anymore, and then someone calls up and says, hey, I want that, now the bill's up. They don't know, on the other hand, that they've gotten even more channels because the package changed, but it was just the level of surprise that I kind of saw. And talking to some people, I had spoken to one gentleman, and he was like, I feel like it's always going up, and I'm not changing my service. And I, you know, said to him, well, you need to read the bill, and it's complicated for a lot of people, so. I know. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. If there's no further testimony, that concludes tonight's public... Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Procedureal, small matter.
Proceed, yep, go ahead.
I'd like to give the copy of the notice as an attachment to the transcript.
Okay, yeah. Those should be entered into it, too.
And I have maybe two due diligence questions.
Sure, want to come back, Bill?
Thank you very much. Good to see you folks. Two due diligence questions I jotted down for Mike Gala and Comcast, just while we have Michael here and before the negotiations. Just sometimes there are things going on between a company and a municipality, and they're, we're not down here in the town, so it's not on our radar screen, and sometimes... So just basically, are there any, just due diligence, I have no basis behind this other than wanting to make sure I know what's going on. Controversies, complaints, or disputes involving Comcast and departments of the town, other than the, you know, that the Cable Committee might not have known about, or nothing to your knowledge? Okay, good. Are there any, and does that include also things being satisfactory in terms of the public ways here, and infrastructure in the right way? Any issues with polls, or Department of Public Works, anything like that? Okay. Any significant controversies going on with subscribers that we're not aware of? That's on your desk. All right, and then a final due diligence question I had is whether, to your knowledge, there are any known changes in operations on the horizon for Lakeville or this region? Okay. All right, I just want to make sure we have a sense if there are any controversies or changes underway. Also, one final question. The FCC just about four or five weeks ago issued a major new rulemaking on calculation of the franchise fee. Has Comcast taken, issued anything, or announced any position on how it will implement that? And what's subpart of that question in terms of, is there any procedure in the law thing to work with municipalities about informing them of Comcast's position on that? As to whether there would be offsets against franchise fee, or is that still 2-0? 2-0? Okay, thank you very much, Michael. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yes.
Bill just reminded me of perhaps a small matter, perhaps not. And I guess my question might even go more directly to Tracy, because I don't think you'd be aware of it. I think it's quarterly, or at least, at least annually, we at the town is supposed to get a Form 100 or 400, I forget the name of it, with a listing of complaints that Comcast has gotten. And I used to get them, and I haven't gotten one for a long time. And when Bill was up here talking about, you know, due diligence and so forth, it dawned on me that I haven't seen one in a while. Tracy, do you have you seen one?
We get them annually.
Okay, have you seen one anytime the...
Yep, I see them all the time.
I'll get in touch with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other further comments from anyone? Okay, if there's no further testimony, that concludes tonight's public hearing. I'll keep tonight's hearing open for 14 days in order to receive additional testimony. Interested parties are encouraged to submit written testimony on any renewal-related issue discussed tonight, or indeed regarding any cable-related issue. Written testimony or comments may be submitted to the Board of Selectmen's Office by September 24, 2019. Those comments should be sent to the Board of Selectmen's Office, Town Hall, 346 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass, 02347. If you have any questions about tonight's hearing or cable television renewal process, please call the Board of Selectmen's Office at 508-946-8803. Thank you all for attending tonight's public ascertainment hearing. Yes, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead.
Just for the benefit of the public, that although the hearing record may close in 14 days, even after that hearing closes by federal law, we're in this ascertainment process that the chairman referenced and the chairman of the Cable Committee referenced, and that keeps going. So people have an ongoing opportunity, separate from the hearing record, to provide further information, either through Bob Marshall and the Cable Committee or through the Board of Selectmen, through the ongoing ascertainment.
You beat me to the punch, Bill.
Okay. Good.
No. Thank you, Bill, for the comment. And so the last comment was, thank you all for attending tonight's public ascertainment hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it, Tracy?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you need any of these copies if anyone has any?
Somebody might want to see them in the town board office.
Sure.
Do you want to?
Sure.
It's okay. Take a minute.
Mine, too. Thanks a lot.
Yeah. No, that's all right. We'll keep them. Agenda item number eight, Discuss Zoning Board of Appeals' Recommendation to Appoint Jerry Noble as Associate Member and Discuss Vacancy for Full Member. The Zoning Board of Appeals met with Gary Noble, who expressed an interest to fill the vacancy on the board. They have recommended him to appoint, be appointed as an associate member. At the selectman appointment, appoint him. His term will expire July 31st, 2019. As a... Is it a full-time?
Tracy can speak to that?
It's a full-time vacancy. But the zoning board of appeals recommended that he be appointed as an associate member.
Yes.
And we already have...
They already have three associate members.
Yep. Okay. And I seem to like that as associate members because they haven't made a decision to appoint a full-time necessarily. They've advertised for interested parties and have received five letters of interest from residents, which are included in the packet. The zoning board has met with a few of the candidates and have included emails from Dawn Foster regarding those meetings. That's from Tracy. So I make the motion that we appoint Jerry Noble as associate member.
I second.
Any discussion on his appointment?
I feel like the zoning board needs, I don't know, some help, direction, trying to... I don't know. They didn't appoint... Because on the day that we appointed, we left it up to them to decide who the full member was going to be, and they still haven't appointed their full member.
You are correct.
Okay. So should we be changing if they don't want to have full members?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So Tracy looked up and we couldn't find if there was a limit on associate members. If there isn't, maybe we need to establish a limit on associate members because I understand they're creating a feeder system for themselves.
Right.
But there is, you know, possibility of being too selective, too, and excluding a lot of really great people in the process. And we want, you know, we want new people with new ideas on our boards and we want to be the type of place there that's accepting. And this might not be a great example of that.
Right. I mean, I just feel like... I just feel like we're not... They haven't appointed a full-time person yet, but they want to put in an associate person. I mean, I would almost like to see that full-time person be appointed before we even appoint any more choices that might be able to be. It just seems to me like, you know... And I, you know, feel like the zoning board is... They're all very important boards, but... So I guess I'm asking what we can... If we should be doing something like that.
Well, Tracy, we've asked for a letter a few times of recommendation, have we not, for the full-time position?
Yes.
So the board has the availability to appoint from the people that have sent letters, but they would be acting on their own authority and not under the, you know, under the guidance.
Recommendation from them.
Yes.
Right.
So, I mean, that is always under your abilities. And the other would be just to write a letter from our office expressing that we would really like to see that full-time position filled. And another one would be to express that how many associate members that the board should be able to fill.
I mean, is it a matter of attendance? Do they not have enough people that come to the meetings? Is that why they needed other associate members?
Not from what I was seeing. I only saw one attendance.
No, they seem to show up.
Yeah. I only saw one attendance issue.
They seem to show up.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I'm just curious what's going on.
Maybe we could ask them to come before the board of selectmen?
You can do that.
Yeah.
Or you can go to their meeting, either way.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe I'll...
You get on their agenda.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, 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 sure. Because, you know, I've spoken to a lot of different parties and I'm still circling, trying to figure out, you know. Anyway, so as in regards to Jerry Noble, I don't know the person, so I'm going on the recommendation of the zoning board. So, I mean, unless... I don't think we're anywhere near being ready at this moment in time to set a limit on associate members. I would have no problem approving this right now. So...
They certainly have interviewed the people, cut their resumes and done their due diligence. They just don't seem to want to jump into the frying pan and appoint a full-time member. But the attendance has been good by most, if not all, of the members, and they still do a pretty good job. But I don't disagree that they should appoint a full-time member. And so we can have them in sometime in the future.
Yeah. And maybe we can even ask, you know, town's growing. I mean, maybe we should have a different makeup or, you know, maybe it's just time to look at it. But as far as this particular one is concerned, I'm... No real questions right now on this.
I made the motion.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number nine.
Mr. Chair, you have to go back to agenda item number six.
Six? Six? What is six? Six is the...
ADA policy documents are devoted.
We didn't do that.
There was one that we didn't do.
We did. They were both drafts. Is that true?
Was it nine? Nine.
They were both drafts.
Yep. We didn't do nine.
We didn't do nine. So the second draft.
So nine is the next one we're doing, right?
Nine.
The Serpent Agreement.
Serpent Agreement.
Nine is...
Yep.
This.
Nope.
I'm sorry. Nine.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay. So that's the one we're on right now.
I'm sorry. I didn't inform you. Item number nine? Is that the one you want to trace?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Authorize Town Administrator to Sign Serpent Agreement for Americans with Disability Act Grant. Town administrator's requesting the use of the Selectmen's Municipal Assistance Hours for review of the ADA municipal grant application and for the board to authorize her to sign the form. If the board is in favor, you would vote to allow the use of the Serpent Municipal Assistance Hours for review of the ADA municipal grant. Maureen, do you want to speak to any of this?
So it's pretty self-explanatory. We have up to 20 hours for the board of selectmen and we have another additional 20 hours through the planning board. We don't know how many hours they're going to use, but I would like to dedicate up to all 20 of those hours for Serpent, for the ADA grant procedures.
Sure. It shouldn't be terribly complicated, as they've done many.
I would hope not, but who knows?
Lee, do you have any questions?
Well, yeah. I just got it today, so I really have no idea. So I... I mean, to me, I... No clue. So I don't want to authorize using anything... I know we have to do that ADA, but right now I have no idea what any of this really is. Because like I said, Serpent is especially a weak thing for me. I mean, we have up to 20 hours as the board of selectmen and then the planning board has... I really wouldn't want to use the planning board's hours.
No. We're not using the planning. We can't.
But even, I mean, what else would we be using these? Are these annual hours? Are they...
So we get them annually, and we've used them for different projects in the past. They've done maps for us. They've done all sorts of stuff. They worked on some of the master plan with the hours, but we did pay for the other master plan stuff. So in order to access up to $250,000 on the ADA grants, we need Serpent's help and guidance to get through there. It's just a procedural way to do it. And I'd rather use time that's already allotted to us for use. So we usually plan through and use bits and pieces at a time. Where this would be using the whole chunk upfront. And that doesn't mean we can't use Serpent for other things, but we actually have to pay for the other things.
Then we would pay for it.
Yes.
Okay. To be perfectly honest, I would like to... Like I said, this one wasn't even in the packet and I'm not prepared to vote for it. So if I can't vote on something I'm not totally understanding or familiar with... So if, you know, we want to table it for two weeks, then I know we're under, you know, a time constraint to do the ADA thing, but I got to know about it more than...
What part might you need to answer?
Well, I mean, I'd like to see examples of things that we've used before and...
For Serpent?
Yeah. These hours.
Maureen, can you speak to some of those?
I mean, I can speak to some of the hours that we have used for the planning board. When we updated our zoning map, you know, through the planning board's authority, we used the hours that were available to us for that.
I mean, but what about the board of selectmen?
I want to say that we might have shared hours with the planning board in some of those initiatives, too.
Very rarely would we...
Need that.
Have a request. It's usually committees that might have a need for it.
Right.
It's just the American Disability Act and it's the only way to get grants, if you will. I consider them a great grant-writing resource. These people are really on the ball when it comes to grant writing.
Yep.
They help us in the green community grants. They help us in all, virtually all of the town grants.
Municipal vulnerability, preparedness.
Right. It's just the process...
So this is no different.
Yeah. Well, the process by which we've gotten here, to me, is what's, you know, just a little concerning for myself because John was the ADA representative. And I think at the last meeting, we changed that to Maureen, and Maureen had indicated she was going to be taking over doing the whatever. And now we're saying, "Oh, well, we can't do that. We need more help." So...
Generally, that's for the complaint. So being the ADA...
Well, no. I thought Maureen had said that you were going to be doing the whole thing. And now we're saying we need help with the whole thing.
Well, I wouldn't be writing a grant, if you will.
Right.
The people that would complain traditionally about access to a public building or the tennis courts or something like that, I would have been the point person on that.
But that's what we changed.
So I can clarify.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I can clarify. So in order to access the funds, we need a third party. The way the grants are set up, the third party has to do the evaluations. We can't... Even though it says self-evaluation, we cannot self-evaluate. So in order to not have to pay an external third party and go out to bid and go through this process and pay whatever their fees are, we would go through Serpent and use them because we've already basically paid upfront with our membership.
Okay. Then I believe you and I have a communication problem, so maybe we should table this till you and I can work on that. So I was not under that impression at all. So if you want to vote for it, I'm going to vote not for it, so we can table it or...
So it doesn't move forward through split vote?
Right. Right. So that's why I'm...
So by the way, in two weeks.
Yeah. So that's why I'm suggesting we table it and I can hash it out with Maureen and then we can come back and do it in two weeks. I'm good with that.
It should be... It's really accessing hours for grant-writing authority.
Yeah. And that's okay.
And they make us evaluate the town buildings, that type of thing.
Right.
And say, "You don't have access to any town building." Particularly, you can say, "The Historical Society." That type of thing.
Yep.
So that's the evaluation process they would do. And we have to do the self-evaluation before we can do the grant writing. So I'll let... Bring it back up in two weeks.
Yep. Maureen and I will work on it.
The item, agenda number 12. You going for it?
Yep.
We have the fight about it. So a request from the fire chief for appointment of Danielle Bentley as firefighter/paramedic. Fire chief has requested that Danielle Bentley be appointed as firefighter/paramedic. Her appointment is subject to successful completion of department-approved physical exam, physical abilities test, and a one-year probationary period. So chief, give us the story.
Thank you for your answer. This is Danielle Bentley. She's from Bridgewater. She was part of the application process that took place recently. She's one of 61 applicants, and she was among our finalists in the interview. She performed really well. She's currently a member of Plumpton Fighter Park. She's certified firefighter, one and two. She's a paramedic, and she also works for Brewster Ambulance and does 911 response for the town of Middleborough. So I consider her to be a nice catch.
Qualified.
She's, you know, she's a mature applicant. She's got a good head on her shoulders and I think we'd make a good decision to appoint her.
Okay.
I make... So that's a mouthful of all that you do.
[laughing]
And so you are a current paramedic?
Yes.
And what do we have to do academy-wise?
Well, she's certified firefighter.
Certified. So we're all set?
Yeah. She actually, she's kind of lobbying to go to the academy. She wants... She hasn't been to Stowe. She was certified through Duxbury. So she's kind of lobbying to go that way. So it's a discussion for another day, I guess.
Okay. Well, I second the nomination.
I'll make the nomination if you...
Well, I thought you already did.
No, I didn't. I just...
Oh, okay. I thought you did. I'm sorry.
So I make a motion that we appoint Danielle Bentley to be a full-time firefighter/paramedic.
Second?
Any further discussion?
Nope.
No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Danielle, congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is he making you move to Lakeville?
No.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Michael for other things?
Thirteen.
One more.
Request from the Fire Chief for appointment of Danielle Blizzard, a temporary full-time firefighter. Why don't you give me the spiel for us?
Okay. Dan is a Rochester resident. He's a former county sheriff from down south of the Capitol College State. He's also a part-time Falmouth police officer, and he's a per diem firefighter on Marion Fire Department. He also is certified one and two. He couldn't make it tonight because he's in paramedic school and tonight is his class. So this is another guy that we'd like to bring along and get him into the feeder system, and hopefully become a full-time firefighter. Right, today, he's addressing a, covering a spot for a line-of-duty injury that's extended absence, and basically appointing him will lessen the burden on the rest of my full-time firefighters and save a little bit of money in the process as well.
Okay. So just to give, which we could read that the position was previously held by Kyle Maderas, who has been hired as a full-time firefighter. We did that a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
The appointment will be contingent upon successful completion of a department-approved physical examination and physical abilities test, and he's another busy firefighter.
Another busy guy.
Doesn't need further education and academy from us. And so I want to make the point that aside from the filling in for a disability situation, he's not being appointed as a full-time firefighter, but as the temporary filler.
That's correct.
Okay. So my motion is to appoint Danielle Blizzard as temporary full-time firefighter. Confusing term, but that's what it is.
Yep. Second motion.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, we're getting there. Request for Tonkin Water Hookup, 44 to 46 Rhode Island Road, Paul Turner. The Board has previously approved Paul Turner's request for a hookup of the Tonkin Water property at 44 to 46 Rhode Island Road for 12 single-family homes using 3,960 gallons per day. He has revised his request as the project is now eight duplex homes containing 16 residential units with an allocation of 5,280 gallons per day. From Tracy, the best way to approve the new request is to rescind your previous vote on January 29, 2019, and make a new motion and revise request. So do I do two motions, Tracy?
Oh, that would probably be cleaner.
Okay. Make a motion to rescind our previous vote of January 29, 2019.
Second?
Well, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the new request is to up the allocation to 5,280 gallons per day, and that's my motion.
Second?
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Fifteen. Request from the zoning board of appeals for comments on special application, 310 Kenneth Wells Drive for Monroe Associates. As this is, from Tracy, as this is the first special permit application that the zoning board of appeals has received for adult-use marijuana retailer, they're asking if the Selectmen have any comments or thoughts regarding the special permit request which is, which is attached. So Monroe Brothers is taking what I consider to be part of the place of Nature's Remedy, which had, has the same address they had when we were entertaining a moratorium on town floor to ban this. They had gone elsewhere on opening a retail facility. They have an investor group, which was the Monroe Brothers, who stepped up and wanted to take over the retail business of 310 Kenneth Wells Drive, taking the place of Nature's Remedy. This has gone through many processes before the planning board, site plan review, and now it's back to the zoning board, which we had, the Selectmen had appointed as the issuing authority. The, this has been kicked around for a long time, many, many, many months. So I'll speak to it just from my end, that this is nothing other than taking over the retail front spot that has already been vetted many times with the Nature's Remedy. And I think my message to them is that they should do this as quickly as they can, as this has gone on for a long, long time. And that's kind of my comment. It's zoned for that area, and it would be the first one that would have a retail recreational permit. Yeah?
I do remember that this was supposed to be part of Nature's Remedy, and, you know, then they decided not to, and that these people are going to step in. So I just, just want to reiterate that on cultivation, we make $25 a pound, correct? But on retail, it's a different percentage, correct? Three percent?
It's three percent, three percent returned by the state, so it's somewhat six percent.
Six percent. And then this was the one that was approved way back when Nature's Remedy had come around, so...
Through Nature's Remedy. They do have their own HCA.
Yeah, they have their own HCA.
They were in host community.
Yeah, okay.
And it's about 2,800 square feet inside the existing facility.
Have you been?
Yes.
Okay. So you know what it is? It's just the front showroom.
Yep.
And I'm sure some behind the scene, down...
Yeah, I do know, and again, this isn't really, you know, our whatever to deal with parking and stuff, but I know one time when I went, there wasn't much done in the front, but I do believe that there's already been some parking and everything put in and whatever, so...
There's over seven parking spaces.
And they have, yeah, and they have made the effort. They reached out and had a meeting with both chiefs last week.
Yep, okay.
And they're making sure that they're satisfying any concerns safety-wise.
Yep.
And that they're trying very hard to work with the town.
Anything that had come up before, even with...
Yep.
Okay.
They're committed to working with the town going forward.
Right. So a general comment, both from the zoning board and from the planning board, is no comment.
Yep.
So if we do comments, my comment is to get this done ASAP, because it's been lingering for a long, long time. And that it's already been vetted, well-vetted by the planning board prior to us kicking the can down the road to the zoning board. And I'd encourage them to look at those meeting, meetings that were held, go onto the Lake Camp view, and make sure that the questions that were asked were properly answered. You know, there's, you know, all the things were done, the lighting, the parking, the permitting, the host community agreements, it's all been addressed in the past. So I'd encourage them to, to move forward with it, which usually we, I stay pretty neutral on, but I've been to those hearings in the past.
I have no formal comment.
So this was just us, them asking for a comment. So my comment is to, not as a board, mine. Number sixteen. Request from the planning board for the site plan review of 310, 310 Kenneth Wells Drive. The planning board has followed the attached site plan. And I guess my real question is, is this the one for the other half of that? Is this the one for the fellows from...
Far River.
Far River.
It says it's prepared for Monroe Associates on the plan.
Prepared for what?
Monroe Associates.
Okay, okay. So it's just the Monroe one? That's all? So the same thing is that this has been vetted many, many times. And my comment, not Leah's, is to move forward ASAP. They've already vetted it many, many times.
I believe that, if I may, Mr. Chair, at the last planning board meeting, the plans that they had provided, the planning board just required, requested that they include the section in which Monroe was looking to take over within the building.
Okay.
And I think that that's why that's here.
Okay. Yep, which they seem to veer mark that front, front section by the cul-de-sac there. Okay?
Yep. I don't really have any comment on that one either.
Item number seventeen. Request from the planning board for site plan review, 5 Harding Street. Planning board has followed the attached site of 5 Harding Street, which is a multi-building plan, which is somewhere here. Well, the package, you can see that there's multiple buildings on the site outlining everything, and I guess my, my general comment is no comment on this, because it's a traditional site. But I do want to say I'm in favor of most, if not all, businesses moving forward. Obviously, they've got to meet all, everyone. So my, my traditional one is no comment. Leah?
No comment.
Okay.
Just reading.
The old Lakeville issue. Agenda number eighteen. Request from Daughters of the American Revolution Constitution Week proclamation. The Daughters of the American Revolution have submitted their annual request for the Selectmen to proclaim the week of September 19, 2019, through September 23, 2019, as Constitution Week. I've attached the proclamation. Do you want to read the proclamation? Or you want me to read it?
I can read it.
Read it a little.
August 24, 2019, Board of Selectmen, Town of Lakeville, 346 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. The Lydia Cobb Kekeation, is that how you say that? I don't even know. Chapter, I apologize, chapter of the Massachusetts Daughters of the American Revolution respectfully requests that you issue a proclamation for Constitution Week, which is September 17 through the 23, 2019. I have enclosed a copy of the proclamation for Constitution Week. If you would like to use it, it would be appreciated if you returned a signed proclamation to one of the chairwomen listed below. If you have any questions, feel free to contact us. Thank you for joining us in the 232nd anniversary celebration of the signing of the United States Constitution. Kristen Jackson of Middleborough and Cheryl Crossley Simmons of Somerset. I can read the proclamation. Whereas September 16, 2019 marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17 through the 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Lakeville, by virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim the week of September 16 through September 22, 2019, as Constitution Week in the Town of Lakeville, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Witness thereof, we have Aaron to sign the, cause the seal of the town, has your name and my name, and...
Mr. Chair, we have to change the dates on that. Now the upper paragraphs are the 17th and 23rd. I used last year's proclamation.
If you wouldn't mind, could I read something that a friend of mine who is in the Daughters of the American Revolution sent me? It's brief. Would you mind, John?
No.
So I...
It's a two-hour reading.
No, it's not. It's very brief. So I, her name is Katie. Actually, we do have members in this area, too, Free Town. I'm not sure of anybody in Lakeville, but, so I said to her, you know, put it in brief, tell me what you, what you think. And she said, sure. As you can see, it's in 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress to set aside as a national observance this particular week. President Eisenhower signed it into law in 1956, but is probably one of our least-known national observances. As Daughters of the American Revolution during this week and always, we encourage all citizens to actually read our Constitution and to reflect upon the document that safeguards our American liberties. Liberties that may many far too often take for granted, but which makes our country the bastion of hope and freedom that we should celebrate and cherish. Now, whether you agree with her or not, I love her passion. So anyways...
So my motion was to proclaim the week of September 17, 2019, through September 23, 2019, as Constitution. That's my motion.
I second?
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Review and vote to approve Selectmen meetings, note April 12, and all is coming. Any comments? I make a motion that we...
I'll second.
Okay. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
New business, new business, old business. I want to bring out that tomorrow is the vote for a road bond approval. Tomorrow at Ted Williams Camp between 12 and 8 o'clock. But this won't be on the news by then. It might be on there by night. There you go.
Tonight, some people are pretty quick.
We'll stay up late, we'll stay up late and watch it, so make sure you go vote.
People do look for it. People look for it pretty quickly on Lake Camp.
Any, any new business? Any old business? And if there's no other business, then I make a motion...
Before you make a motion?
Yeah.
Under other items?
Other?
It's the Mass Municipal Association upcoming legislative breakfast meetings. The closest one seems to be in Halifax.
Halifax.
So if anyone would like to go...
October, October 4.
I can register them.
Yeah, I would like to go to that one.
Not I.
All right.
Okay. I'll make a motion. We close our September 9 meeting.
Second?
At the 6th.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it.